701, roll call, Tracy, absent; Jen, present; Brian, absent; Kyle.
Present.
Steve.
Present.
Rob.
Present.
Mary Ann.
Present.
Jeff.
Present.
Okay. Public hearing, we have none. Approval of the agenda, just as a note, Rob wanted to add just some more content under the PUD ordinance, but we'll just cover it under there. So, anybody else? Good?
I'm sure you approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, I'm due in minutes because Tracy's not here, so if I'm slow, I apologize. Public comments on agenda items.
They must be lined up.
Right.
Right.
Approval of the minutes from November 5th, 2018. I sent these out relatively late today. Is anybody prepared, or do we want to?
I guess.
I read them.
I read them. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communication correspondence workshop, I don't have anything with anybody. Okay, action items. Matters of consideration, old business. Wait, oh, sorry. Would communication correspondence workshop include that Saturday thing that's coming up in January? The, it may, I'm not, I don't have all the details on that. No? No. Okay. That's the rules, the, yeah, yeah, that's it. Okay.
Are you aware of that? If a Robert's rules.
Yeah, but the Michigan Municipal League is coming down doing a presentation on the Saturday in January. Okay. And everybody's encouraged to attend that? Yes, if you're available and you go through.
What's the date?
It's Saturday, the first Saturday, or, I'm going to check that, I think it's.
I'm assuming it's the.
It's here, yeah.
Here, like here, here, here?
Here, 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 here.
Even better.
Um, is it the 5th? I think it is the 5th, I just remember it's a Saturday all day. I feel like it's the 5th, so, but if you're interested in that, if it's not the 5th, it's the 12th, I'm pretty sure it's the 5th though, I'll get in touch with Sandy. You think it's 12? Okay, it's the 5th or the 12th.
Who's Sandy?
The office administrator. We have to register for that, or, you know what, let's hold it, let me send out a quick text, I'll find out the answer to those questions. No, it's a good question. Okay, and we'll go back to that. Okay, anybody else on? Okay, matters for consideration, back to old business, PUD ordinance discussion. Action, sorry, Jeff.
Last month, I gave you a preliminary draft, and I say preliminary because as I've read through this again over the last month, I see some things I need to add and address. But, this is basically, the document is developed in-house with the existing PUD ordinance and also work that other staff colleagues done at the city do. With that, I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at it, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer any, if there's areas of it that you feel need further explanation as to why they're in there or what the intent is, I can try to answer any of those types of questions. But I think that the, I guess just stating that the main reason we looked to amend this was to update it to make sure that as we move forward in the future, we didn't have any of the former snafus that we had with PUD development. We're also looking to open this up to all districts within limitations which are set within here, and also the major other item here is reducing the minimum size to five acres from, I think it was 20 or 25.
20.
Just 20.
Okay, I'm really sorry, Jeff, reducing acreage, what were the major changes?
I'm sorry, reducing acreage, extending the PUD to all zoning districts.
Okay. That was it? For major?
And the third one was, no, I think there's, and then there's just other administrative things that are codified, I guess that was the other changes.
Sorry, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
I need everybody and.
Are you answered, let me, Jeff, are you good?
Actually, the only thing that I wanted to add, what I believe needs to be added to the document as it exists, if you go to the very last section, we have the development regulations, we have the application and review portion. Within this, we indicate that if the city, if the village council approves the PUD, that the village and the applicant shall enter into a written agreement that outlines the terms and approval, and all those things we want to make sure that are put in the record at that point in time. What I think needs to be expanded here, what I would kick it out to our attorney is what elements, what default elements should be included. Additionally, the last item, item E1, it talks about the community and the developer have the ability to amend that document, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the proper legal way that would be, that would be done. Because I don't think that, there's two documents here, the document that we approved as the site plan for the PUD stands as one piece, and then there's also then the legal agreement that will go along with that, that the planning commission doesn't necessarily have the ultimate final say, city council will work on that, also the city, I'm sorry, the village council and village attorney will be involved with the developer negotiating what's in there.
And the bylaws, is that what you're talking about?
Well, not necessarily the bylaws, but this would be, these are the elements that need to be here, this is the water, this is where, this is the bond surety that you'll provide, there's a lot of elements that could be there, that's why I like a comprehensive list from the attorney, what they think should be part of that, I think should be included in here. But additionally, if an amendment is to take place, I'm not exactly sure where the proper place for the amendment is, I don't know if it comes to the building department here, and it becomes an amendment to the site plan, or if they start with amending that legal document first. Because generally with that document, there will be text in there that will talk about how this document can be changed. If both parties agree to this amendment, then you can make an amendment to the plan, and then that might say, okay, we're approving allowing you to do an amendment, now take a site plan and take it back to the building department and run it through the process. So, I think, we want to get a read from what our attorneys are comfortable with and what they think the best practices is, practices are around that. So I was going to talk to Chris after the meeting to see if he would have any objections of us moving it, to have us take a look at that portion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do HOAs get any say in that collaboration between?
No, because at this point, at this point in time, the HOA wouldn't be formed.
I was talking more in the, is there anything here that, like, for the amendments down the line, or anything like that?
No.
So, say Decorah, for example, they wanted to come in and do an amendment, is there any?
Say they want, I mean, the way this would, I mean, the way this should work, the way it should have worked in Decorah, they wanted to come in and come back and do an amendment, say we're going to change the elevation of the homes in here, they would need to come back or council, get the authorization to do the amendment, and then we would need to run that through as a site plan and have a public hearing where the public would be, so there would be an opportunity there.
For that.
But the HOA would not necessarily be a partner or a person at the table doing that, they would just be the citizenry that would come to the public hearing and be able to express themselves that way.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, questions for this part?
None.
Good. Okay, Rob?
I passed out, I came here to the village and I didn't have a whole lot of time, I spent about an hour here looking at documents, I went and addressed council at their last meeting, and what I attached, the first two pages, or the front and back, are, shows the path that reaches all the way from Rashia basically into the subdivision. And both of these documents are sales pieces of documentation that were about 2007, the subdivision process was started like in 2001. So, they were selling the homes, and you'll see these little homes in the corner, this was the second set of models in Decorah Park. So they were selling it, both of these documents, as that trail being part of the subdivision. And then I also pulled, I wish I would have pulled the copy of the homes, but in the village are all the homes that were first built in the subdivision. And each of those plans were gone through by planning commission and approved. So, currently, he's not building those homes, he's building other homes that have not been approved by planning or the village council, he's just taking upon himself to build what he wants to build without any oversight. I pulled this particular document and gave it to you, not as much as for what it says, but for what it's talking about. If you look at page three near the top, it talks about the front yard setbacks of 35 feet. Well, if you go over to Penbrook and you see what the houses that he's building on Penbrook, the main drag, there is no 35 foot setback as the rest of the homes are set. So setbacks were set, and they're not getting followed.
Well, this.
I don't know what the effect of the.
This is a letter of recommendation from a planner, this is not what they approved.
Yes, it's not.
So, no, I think it's an example of.
This is what.
It's an example of what's being talked about at planning.
Right, we don't, but this is to say that the planners didn't ignore this.
Well, if every other house in the subdivision is set back at so many feet, and then these three houses aren't, he's ignoring the setbacks.
But what, did you see the actual set plan to see what they approved?
It is a mess, and Mr. Doherty wouldn't let me go back and look at anything, it was just what she could pull and show me in the window.
Because that would be like, that's like my, like, we have this big site plan right here, like, because these haven't been approved by planning before, so, whatever was approved before is what you want to find a look at, like, this is letters.
That's what I'm trying to say.
It's interesting information to see what previous planners had recommended for PUDs for us to look at while we're looking at our.
Yeah, this is not for substance as much as it is, these are the items that they were discussing.
Right.
These are items that are not going to be discussed as they build new homes. Number three discusses breakdown to the covered porches. Number five discusses the amount of open space and blocking it in. I hope that these lead to where real documents are, but I don't know where they are, I just know for sure the man was selling a trail in his documents, so I know that, it spoke to me there, regardless of anything that's signed in this village, he was selling it. Number nine, this actually says they discussed putting lights throughout the entire subdivision because there's an ordinance that says there has to be lights through the subdivision, so what happened to lights throughout the subdivision? I don't know, I haven't had time to look up the lighting ordinance, but I'm guessing it's probably still there, and those lights weren't put in. Number 11, those talking about how many doors are on the housing plans that they're looking at, so again, they're looking at the housing plans. If you go to number 12, the color of building materials, the elevations of all sides of the homes, transformer locations and methods to screen them, hazardous subsidence report form, and environmental permits, interrupt reguable covenant for the open space should be reviewed and accepted by the village attorney, which again should be covering our path that they're selling to the people. Those are just, I didn't bring this for as much the, just being some kind of final document, but it talks about all the things that aren't being done, and the reason I keep pushing this is, you know, we all have this map, and if you look at it, these PUDs that are controlled by Lombardo Company, whoever they are, is probably 20% of the village, and it's almost every bit of residential property we own. So, going forward, the value of these properties is what we will live on until this village is dead and gone, or whatever happens to it. This is a big part of our deep cuts, these residential subdivisions, and they should be as top quality as we can give them, and sell them as high as they can get for them. So, I mean, that's what we're going to live on, that's our, that's the bread and butter of the village is our property taxes. So that's why I'm so concerned, because how are we going to keep going through and ever having the services that we want as a village, whether it's a real rec department or a police department, if we don't have property to tax at the most max, we're only square, whatever it is, 1.2 something miles, and we're never going to get any bigger, well, I guess it's possible we create a dump in half's property, but, that's why I keep pushing this, and it's so important that we get our bang out of our butt, and that we're not being run by the developer. As you can see through that document, they were looking at every single little thing and reviewing it, and that did not continue to happen afterwards, and we all know the story of the village in a way. I am going to go to council again this month, I don't know, anything has been done since last month. I know Lombardo is not receptive to doing anything, I spoke with Wright Windy and his or building project, I don't know whatever, guy, and he has no interest in doing anything different than what they're doing, but what I think they're doing is getting, what they're getting away with is wrong, and I don't know how you guys feel, but if you do feel that way, I hope you go to council the next medium and also express.
In the, in the north sub, you know, where they have that model, is there a map of the sub, or what, you know, there has to be some sort of maps when people come in, they want to buy out a lot, where is the lot, I'm wondering.
Oh, a current one?
Yeah, could the trail be on that map? Because I know what we bought, we moved in, we saw that trail, Monterey, at that home, if they have some sort of.
No, it's not on there.
No.
The village, and I think you know this, the village is trying to acquire that trail, and Chris did meet with them, and, or is meeting with them today or tomorrow, I'm going to show her today, to reacquire that trail, to have that conversation with the current owner, not that it justifies that it's ever relinquished, but they are trying to reacquire it. I guess, you know, and I don't know, and I wish Brian was here, do you know if we ever got a legal opinion on that consent judgment by any agency? Because the one thing that I kind of go to is, and I'm with you, I mean, we've been here for, you know, almost this beginning of this, it's not what it was supposed to be, but with the consent judgment, my understanding is that it's, that they're no longer held to anything that they made, any agreements that they made with us at all, and what they're doing is.
And that's what I'm trying to get, that consent judgment, and is there a reason that it's just not hub of record?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, maybe perhaps we just, like, if Brian was here would be there, we asked for a legal opinion on that judgment.
I went to the court also, they couldn't provide you of anything in regards to Lombardo except.
I see.
The Greco title, because Greco title didn't actually hold any money in bonds, so there's a lawsuit over that.
I think that's the one we had, and that is where the consent judgment was made, is under that. We sued them over the bonds, and somehow we ended up with a consent judgment against us. I don't, I'm not saying I didn't understand that, so.
Do you have any idea when it was?
Jamie was in, latter part of his, what, how many terms was he, three? Like, six years?
One, two.
Well, five, five and a bit. Five? Does anybody end up in there, like, towards the latter part?
Yeah.
Before the first term, I think, before the last term, but in this middle. My guess is, but it was associated with the bond that was done by attorney Davis.
And I called Devon to ask her, you know, when it was, or, and she doesn't call anything about consent judgment where Lombardo can do what he wanted to do. So they didn't get any money out of the Greco title thing.
So, let's, let's assume that this consent judgment said that they're not tied to this PUD anymore, so, but, there's, the PUD still exists, I mean, it's an entity that the village.
That's how I would understand, I don't, yeah, I can't understand it.
Maybe we just need to do a FOIA request for the approved PUD.
Well, we really, we don't need to do FOIA requests, we just ask.
I know, yeah, let's see if I grab, grab my escort, he's not getting it.
I think, you know, we forwarded over to Brian that these are requests, and I also got to ask, like, where is our place's planning versus council's place, I don't know where it's our place.
Yeah, it's kind of a gray area, right? Because we're.
I kind of feel like it's not, with all due respect, I kind of feel like it's more of a, something that they should be pursuant of.
But if it was new PUD.
Correct.
And we would review the site plans and everything, and we would have made a consent on it. So, at one point, that PUD approval originated at this table, you know, but you're at, I don't know.
But if once it's done, it's.
Whose job is it to?
Council.
Yeah, so I think probably, probably council's job to enforce it, but we could at the minimum, you know, feed it up our.
Right.
Our, you know, our.
Our Brian.
Decide some of the situation. But I think that, that site plan that a council approved, or that planning approved, is going to be the golden key to everything.
In some ways, I agree, but when you see, when you go in there and you actually see the home plans and you see the discussion, and you, the home, the approved home plans are sitting there with signatures all done, they're there, those are the homes that were approved.
Yeah.
They're currently building our homes and it's not that approved. They are, they would have never stopped that on that map if they didn't have to do it.
Yeah, the trail, I mean, the, what's I'm saying, documentation's a whole different story, like, you can't hold them to an advertisement, but we could hold them to a PUD, you can hold them to, you know, site plans and drawings and background stuff, but.
My village officials and village should be standing up for me as a homeowner, I live in this village, I pay taxes, this is what I bought, my village should be standing up and saying, hey, build it.
If the village has no, you know, nothing documented or anything to enforce, they can't just prevent Lombardo from building a house because of not putting a trail up, Lombardo could just sue them and say, because they have no, you know, backing.
Then let them sue them. I bought a house with a product that I didn't get, and your village is here to protect me, not protect Lombardo, we're here to protect the residents that live in the village.
Well, as the planning commission, or, no offense to you, but we should be thinking as a village as a whole, as a commission, procedures, documents, role, regulations, not your feelings about a trail you feel betrayed, it's different, and I understand, I agree with you, but it's different.
Right, I agree.
But why wouldn't this body stand up for past planning commissions' villages?
Well, they should.
It's like the village board has to stand up.
They absolutely should, if a nice planning commission approved something, and that trail's on their document, on the site plan, then absolutely the village shouldn't enforce it. That's why you can find what they approved, if that trail wasn't on the site plan that was approved, then they technically can't put that trail in.
Then no, you have to sue.
So, that's, we got to find that site plan that's approved, and it might make everybody happy.
And they're also talking about the document.
What?
That locks up all the open spaces.
Interesting.
Where is that? So obviously, it must exist from this documentation.
Are site plans filed with the county as well as the community there in, Jeff?
This would have been a condo site plan, yeah, it would have been registered, and there would probably, there would be, it would be at the registered deeds office.
I thought Brian had the original site plan for our sub.
No, Brian has, he has some drawings.
Yes.
And the drawings, we don't know at which rev, you know.
Oh, the original was.
You know, if they're outside, they're just pieces of it.
And I do know that there have been revisions since the original, I mean, the original, the PUD was platted, but then it was, then it was submitted in phases through amendments to a master de plat for a condominium. So, the last I had seen is the streets that are in the north section, that the oval loop that's up there, that, that came in as one of the last, but phase two, or phase three was an amendment to it, because I've seen, I've seen those at our office.
I do have a question, and it's just probably complicated, but, are they, okay, so they're there, let's just say for the sake of this consent judgment, nullify all of their past obligations?
Potentially.
Potentially, and just say for this, because that seems to be the working scenario, would they have not had to come in to get a new PUD?
Right, but it sounds like.
It probably, probably depends, we need to see the contents of what the consent judgment says, if there were lots that were left over, I mean, there's, there were different, I've heard different things, but I won't speak to any of them, I have, I've never seen the document, but I heard there was a waiting of fees for certain things.
Yes, it was, yeah.
But what all the details are, I have no idea.
It also discusses in that document their review of the bylaws at the planning, discusses that as well. So, it's not looking at just the PUD, it was looking at the bylaws as well for their approval.
I mean, it sounds like we need to get that site plan.
Have you gone to the county to look?
No.
Actually, the consent.
I went to the county for the consent judgment.
They did not have it?
They, they told me to come away, case number or a date or.
It is attached to the Greco title case.
And I was looking for Lombardo, not Greco title. Because that, Greco title ended up into Lombardo getting, you know, a free ride anywhere, I mean, that just don't make any sense, they didn't put up the bond money they were supposed to put up with Greco title. And I, yeah, who knows what about that, but Greco title, you know, they're giving money to Lombardo to help bonds, Lombardo never gave Greco title the money, but yet they issued the bonds, with, you know, nothing to back them up, and that's where the problem came in.
You said you found the document for that?
I didn't ask for Greco title.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
But Greco title started while I was still on council, it didn't finish, I was gone in the middle of it, but I was here for the beginning of it. But what I'm saying is that somebody has to do something to stand up. Quite honestly, council was not very receptive, the only one that was, was Dan, and Dan's So, somebody should be standing up for this, I mean, it's obvious that he's doing what he's not supposed to do, I mean, he, he's not even presenting the home plans for approval, I mean, obviously, they had to be done in the past, and I don't know how you come back and change them, but I think you would still have to approach the planning commission to, to say, hey, I want to build a different house, because I have approval for 23 other houses, but I don't have any approval for the ones I'm building now. And I didn't see all 23 of them, I saw the Wyndham, God, I can't remember the names of the others, but I saw three others that were attached together with that particular house.
So who would be responsible for addressing that?
Ultimately, it becomes council, council to lead directing the village legal resources to do it, or if it wanted to be a body of that, I mean, there's no reason a body of homeowners association or an individual resident couldn't try to bring suit against Lombardo, I don't know what the result would be or how that would be.
Ultimately, it becomes council, council to lead directing the village legal resources to do it, or if it wanted to be a body, then, I mean, there's no reason a body, the homeowners association or an individual resident couldn't try to bring suit against Lombardo, I don't know what the result will be or how that would be.
I saw at the last meeting or the meeting prior, Mr. Dilbert said to find that site plan, then it would be presented to council. Thought it better.
I thought Brian said he, I think Brian already had something that he didn't have.
I mean, if we start with that.
Right.
I mean, then, that would be a good starting point, I mean, that would, that would probably answer just about every question.
But as far as documentation, this place has been never very good at keeping it in any kind of.
Well, might now come over here, might come from the county.
It sounds like it does come from the county.
Certainly, can they get it from Lombardo?
No.
The other, the other avenue would be through Birchman or Royal, who looked like they were planning consultants at that time, that would be a request felt from the village.
Do they still exist?
Yes. Yes, and most, most firms will keep copies of site plans and those things that they've approved in their records.
But would they have a copy that, that approved?
They, they would, I would think they would have a copy of the approved final plan, because it would be their recommendations of these, this, I mean, what you, what you brought tonight is their pre, their preliminary site plan, we use, it's in there. The, my, my, my assumption would be that that went back to Lombardo, those changes were made, the site plan was submitted.
Yeah.
It must, it must have passed, so they would have had, they would have had a letter of recommendation probably in the file somewhere to planning commission, just as I would write after reviewing this zoning compliance meets everything would approve, recommend approval, there should be a letter there.
So, you think, you think per se, in your office or because you're the county, it just goes to the registered deeds?
No, all, all, all subdivisions and condominium plats are recorded at the registered deeds, that's state, state law.
No, but I'm saying, you're, you are a planner.
Correct.
So does the county planning also keep copies of things they approved?
I do keep copies of all of these packets that I've been doing, reporting, yes, so far, yes. But we would not have, we do not have a copy of a site plan for every development, all the different communities. We rely on registered deeds, we rely on going and finding out what that library page number is, and then going and looking it up electronically or someplace, I would think.
But you keep a copy of what you do?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, you didn't do this, so you could.
I would call.
Who else, who else would have the authority to approve us, besides the planning commission?
Well, actually, the planning, if you look at the PUD, it's a planning commission just made a recommendation to council, council made, council made legislative approval on this. We do, we do rezonings, we do recommendations of the master plan, but whenever there's an actual change to the zoning ordinance, or there is something that is, um, an application of an ordinance, which the zoning ordinance is, it becomes, it becomes council's decisions, and they're the final. So it would just be, we were, we're just a recommend, uh, recommending by, you know, firstes.
But wouldn't there be a record of our recommendation?
Potentially, if, if there is a plan in style for that, or this would be like early 2000, I mean, this is 2002, I think.
Yeah. May 6?
Yeah.
I don't know about finding all that, so, they do have good records, I, I, I will say they, they do have a good set of minutes back there, but they don't necessarily have what's attached to the minutes.
Yeah, minutes are very vague, as far as any kind of detail whatsoever, depending on the working time. Some are very detailed, and told you abolished, and others said approved. That's it, no attached documentation or anything to back up what. So I'm, I'm going to go to council again this week, or next week, I should say, and if anybody would like to join me, I'd appreciate it, but I think something has to be done, and somebody has to stand up. Because there, if, if, what is said in, Lombardo does have a free pass, they have a free pass on 20% of our village.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day.
Who proved that to you?
They're still selling houses, if they weren't, if they were trying to put up a house that wasn't selling, that's one thing, but they still are selling houses. Granted, they don't like to sell expensive houses, but couldn't they sell more expensive houses, is the question, I don't know. So there's a, a balance, but.
They're still selling houses in the range of.
Where they originally were sold for.
Yeah, they're still in the range.
But they should, I mean, we slap up the same house on any other municipal and area that's 20% more, but.
And the house that, again, that they're building, it, it's the same house that they're building in Pembroke. Well, Pembroke was a whole nother set of housing plans. I think there were 18 original housing plans over three builders with that subdivision. Um, and they're the same basic look of a house that we're getting in Decor Park. So it's just a whole bunch of row housing getting placed all over the village, and a lot of people that do leave the village, leave it because they can't get more of a house than what they have here now. And that was supposed to be, your starter was supposed to be Amherst, and then you were supposed to go to, you know, the, or apart was a bigger one, and then Pembroke was supposed to be our bigger luxury homes. And so that there was a place to move within the confines of still staying in the village, but now that's not a choice. If you want something more, you've got to go outside the village, and we don't retain people here. Good people that I've had to see move away, that they wanted a bigger house, and they can't buy it in, in New Haven, because we're getting the same house dropped all over the place now. It makes us more transient as a community, if you have a more transient community, it doesn't make it stronger. You need people that will come here and want to be a part of it for the next 50 years, and stay here. And here's a whole big pile of what we want out of this village, depends on what we get out of our housing. But, I must get off my, so.
Okay. Thank you, and let us know, well, I'm sure you will, council and whatnot, and perhaps the county for those.
And I wish I had more time, but I work 60 hours a week, I run Boy Scouts, which takes me about 15 hours a week, um, for a whole hour meeting, you know, all the other activities you're doing a weekend, so my, my schedule's kind of, kind of packed. I wish I had more time to devote to, but somehow I've got to get the village to stand behind us as residents do, which is what I think their job is, but that's always the night, phone call. Thanks.
Thank you. So we're going to go down to new business. Unless, did you have anything else, Jeff, with PD, are you good?
No, no, like I said, I will, my, my next actions are going to be speak to Chris and talk to Madison's group with the attorney, come back, I'll try to get you guys to, try to get some language from them, so that we can wrap this up in January, if, if we get it in time.
And where will we be going after that?
Well, I tried to get a request into our court council plan where the status on signs was. Right now, I'm hoping I will know next week if they're going to take, if they're going to take a look at it, or if we're going to take a look at it. So I'll give a status report on that. I'm not exactly sure, I mean, there's elements out there that are approved, um, there's some things that we have out there that are, that are, that are hanging in terms of recommendations. I think maybe what I'll do next time around is put together a summary of everything we've touched so far, and what the major changes are. And then looking ahead, I guess, I, it's not my call, but, um, an update of the five-year master plan is coming. So, I guess that kind of, the, the discussion that I would suggest that we might want to have is, if the master plan changes, if the master plan is coming, there's an opportunity to do wholesale changes. We've tweaked things administratively within the zoning ordinance so far, tried to make some things maybe more workable, make some properties a little bit easier to develop. If there's greater changes that we want to look at in terms of revisioning downtown, we'll begin trying to do other things with potentially some of our owners of some of the Brownfield properties. Those would be elements we could consider in the master plan, and those could be recommendations for zoning changes that come out of the plan. They, that would be the more appropriate place to do a broader brush things. So I guess it, I guess it depends on what direction this body wants to go.
Would that also be where we would, like Rosel Street, it's, it's a county road.
It is.
How do we request that they, they pave it?
The way, the way, the way it would work is that you, you make the request to them, and then you cost share at 60/40. The, the county has a pavement program for, I don't think, and actually, I'm going to say, don't quote me on this, on the match, I may be wrong on that match, uh, but it is a matching grant, uh, there is money in the pot, it's just having the community have the money to put it.
Who's the, who, who's the bigger portion, the county?
Um, I believe with Rosel, we have larger portions than county, but I believe you also have Lennox, I think, I believe you split down the middle. I have to take a look, if the center line of the road is the community boundary, then Lennox Township becomes involved as well. Um, and there's different ways it can be done, uh, a community, some communities will go with a special assessment, but that takes the will of the people who live along Rosel Road, if they want to pay increased taxes down, improve road. With that improvement, though, you know, once you're putting that improvement in, then it draws the question, do we extend water, do we extend soil, what are we doing the improvement for? If it's just a quick throughfare to town, that's one thing.
Yeah.
If it's to support other economic or industrial stuff along there, potentially.
That's my thought.
There are potentially, in those cases, there are funds that are available, potential grant funds, that's again a match, but available through the, uh, through MDOT. They do have a transportation economic development fund, um, in some cases, it can be used to leverage those types of projects. We need to pave this road, we need to redo, um, um, North Bay Industrial, because the roads are breaking down. Those monies can be leveraged, but then again, it's a, it's a community contribution, and then the state also does, um, evaluation in terms of types of jobs, what the, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a, a rating system basically applied for the grant.
But the assessment isn't necessarily something that the people that live on there approve, but council says, hey, yes, we're going to fund this road through assessments of the people that live there, and that's what you've got to pay.
Not, well, not exactly, no, if you're going to do a special assessment district where you're going to do a special tax on just the people there, you've got to, you have to have some type of a buy-in, and there's a public hearing, and there's an option to, for the community to feel there. If the village wants to pay it out of the general fund for the benefit of the village, the village could just enter that contract with the roads department, and also its neighboring community, and could pay their share to have the road paved.
Well, we had brought that, um, the, the choice of, uh, when the sewers are done, to special assess, was all, was a vote of council was what the opinion was back then.
That may have been, that may have been a different assessment, because that was, I, I can't speak for that, because that's, that's, you're talking about a different authority that you're paying money to, that was the, that time when the Detroit Water and Sewer Authority, I think that was helping extend that.
It's actually TARP.
Okay, I, I, I'm not familiar, but I know that you guys did extensive work out here on that. But in this case, that would be a local initiative that's been requested by the local unit of government, because you feel that you want to increase the, either the throughfare there, the economic viability of the area, so it would end up being, you know, it would end up being a contribution directly to the community.
Well, there would be anything along that road unless we put a road there, you know. You kind of have a road to drive your trucks on.
That would be something, that would be a very appropriate topic to discuss during the master plan process, because as we go through that process, we are going to engage the community, we are going to engage our neighboring communities, we're going to take a look at their master plans and see what they say, what they're planning on doing on our borders, looking to see what we're doing, if it's, uh, if they're complementing land uses, or if we've got opposing things. That's all part of the process, it has to be a very comprehensive process, so that could definitely be something that's looked at. It may not come out of it, but it could be, there could be a very strong recommendation for that, um, and that could be tied bar into a, a, a larger, um, idea or rebranding of that area, to say, this is our industrial area. These are, these are the properties that we have that are allowed, actively market them, bring someone, bring in the company type of company, I would say, let's make it active market, let's try to bring in the industrial company, we want not something who we need to accept. So, there's opportunity. But again, I need to take a look and see, I don't remember exactly when our plan expires, if our plan expires.
I do think that's what it is at the end.
I think it's.
When did you start?
I think it's been four years now, I'd have to go back.
It was the very, it was the very first thing you did, right?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, and then it took us.
And Jamie was here at that point in time.
And it took us about six months.
Yeah, it, that, generally, a 68-month process, and it takes a while to engage the public.
Councilor Sharon?
Yes. He's on his third. It's actually, I'll just pull it up real quick, it's on our.
I apologize, I should, no, we does park.
I've, I've got it.
We've got a couple of different plans, and one all around the same time.
It's all good. 2015, 2019.
Okay, so it's going to be next year.
So April 14, 2015.
Generally, um, I think the way that we, we're, the way we are enabled through the, um, the organs, we will be, you know, directed from, we will be looking for a directive from village council to step that process.
Okay.
And if that's a direction that we think we're going, um, what I can do, I can provide a, in January or February, I think, depending on when we include, for that, provide a, a timeline calendar of what, uh, what that process would look like going through the year.
So, yeah, it was April 14, so. All right. Okay, we good? Uh, planning resignation, Mr. Kappa.
I'll change it, am I?
Oh, okay, never mind, moving on.
Just kidding.
Uh, if you guys can get your emails today, Kyle is, um, requesting to leave us, so we have to make a motion to accept or deny his resignation. Did you want to share anything?
No, just that, uh, you know, I did plan on spending such a short, short time here, but purchased a property, decided to build on it soon rather than later, so.
Where's it at?
What's that?
Where's it at?
Casco.
Hopefully, I don't know where Casco is.
It's not, no, it's actually just go outside 94, um, county, that was out of county line, it starts Casco.
Oh.
North of 26, east of county line, it's Casco Township.
Oh.
So we're essentially going to be, like, we're north of Springborn and on Church Road, so it's three miles east of county line.
Are you in St. Gercon?
St. Gercon, yeah.
My home church road, it's just for churches.
Yeah, church at the other end of it, yes. So take Church Road north, all right, there's our lot by five buildings from here, right now, but.
So is that Anchor Bay Schools then?
Anchor Bay Schools.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
You too. No, no problem, I, I, I wish I could stay longer, I enjoyed it, I wish you all luck in the future, keep doing what you're doing, we're making a lot of progress, we all have a lot to move forward, hopefully, getting some good people to fill my spot, and keep it moving.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul, is there? Hi.
Hi.
No.
Only takes two no's to screw them at this point.
Come on, guys. Okay, so you're going to go now, Mary?
No. I'll let you move.
I don't mind pissing Kyle off, but I don't want to have Keith going to move there.
That probably works.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, next item is our 2019 schedule, if, if, for anybody that can pull it up right now, if you didn't have a chance to look at it. With the exception of January, they are all on the first Tuesday of the month, first Tuesday of January is New Year's Day. So I took the initiative to move that to the following Monday, um, which, I'm trying to pull that up, which I believe is January 6th?
7th.
Yes, January 7th.
That's, that's Monday.
That's a Monday, because council meets on the Tuesday.
I'll put it on the first.
Okay, so is anybody, everybody good with the, that's the only change aside from the first Tuesdays of the month, unless anybody sees anything else there that screams at them. Uh, July 2nd, that was two days before 4th. July 2nd, that was two days before 4th of July.
It's questionable. We, we met last, this past July on, what, the 3rd?
I think so.
When does the 4th of July fall?
Thursday.
I'm gonna say, I would be there. But.
I, July is, we got some time.
Yes, we do. We can always modify it and see what's going on at the time and all that sort of stuff.
I mean, I'll have a problem with just moving it to the following Monday now. I mean, you know you're not gonna be in?
I know, I'm not gonna be.
From July?
July.
I mean.
I mean, I don't know what my July plans are.
I don't know what's going on tomorrow.
I don't know what's going on two hours, so.
But that would make it a little more sense.
Put it on the 9th, but that's, council's on the 9th, so.
We'd have to go to the.
Monday, the 8th?
The 8th.
I'd do for that.
Okay.
July 8th?
July 8th, and we went on, modify this to change it before we approve it, so. So January 7th, I'm just gonna say November, February 5th, March 5th, April 2nd, May 7th, June 4th, July 2nd, August 6th, October 3rd, October 1st. Oh, sorry, July 8th.
Oh, I think that's the week my kid comes on to, so.
The 2nd? The 2nd?
That, first week is July. His last week of school, and it was the last week of June.
So October 1st, November 5th, December 3rd. So a motion to approve next year's planning meetings.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad they came though, they don't work.
I should have done that the other way. A session next month.
I think, I think it counts until you're out of the board.
Okay, so, Matt is for discussion, anybody?
Rob, I found the core docket for the Greco Lombardo, and it mentions a consent judgment in there, so. Do you think I can just give you?
Oh, cool, thank you.
Take a look at it.
You found it?
Found it. I think I've heard that.
Oh, gotcha. Loving your dad.
That's the case number. It started in 2011. The consent judgment was in August of 2012.
What was the year of that?
2012. August 15th.
So it was one of the last things you did.
Yep.
When was the?
Case opened in 2011. So what's interesting is though, Lombardo is named, Greco is named, Pembroke LLC is named.
Pembroke is also there.
Amherst LLC is named.
They're all there.
Decor Park is not named.
Oh.
I vaguely remember now, I'm reading that, last time we talked about this, that President Dilbert found it only involved Amherst. So you'll have to find it. Now you have the case number, you should be able to get the copies of all the consent agreements and everything, or whatever's in there.
Since 20, so 2011 is when it was opened?
Yeah, it's when it opened, yep.
Well, maybe didn't you find it till last year?
I don't know, I don't know, it was later this year, I don't know. But that's the year it opened up, it closed up in August.
So it gives him free rein in all those other subs except?
Well, we don't know what it says.
True.
We have no idea what it says. But that, but it references that, you can't look it up on the website what it is. You can just see like the events and who was involved. So how did you have that?
She could come up with, she told me to come up with a number.
There you go, now you got one.
Thank you.
Okay. So Matt's for discussion, good, planners report, assuming you're in. Public comments on non-agenda items, none. Conference table, I'm sorry, my agenda really just, I did it really quickly today. And adjournment, motion to adjourn, 7:55. I'll make a motion to adjourn 7:55. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Do you want to leave or?
Yes. I am the second.